Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of regular meeting of November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, are there any questions or comments regarding them? All right, seeing none, I move that we accept the minutes.
Second.
All right, we got a second from Councilmember Frye. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through seventeen.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda? Is there any discussion surrounding the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I move that we accept staff's recommended action and pass the consent agenda as is. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second with Councilmember Frye. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. All right, now we're on to appointments and comments. So are there any? Oh, board of bids, I apologize. Yep, I'm flying along here. All right, Mr. Laubert.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, City Council, Josh Laubert, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened November twenty-seventh, and the following recommendations are for janitorial services. For P and P services, Stevens Industries and Wilson Building Maintenance. Recommendation is extend the contract one hundred and fifty days, ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Next, we have the Bailey Sleeve Fill Vows for Bailey Valve Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. We have ERT Water Module for Itron Incorporated in the amount of eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And we have the Agenda Management Meeting Software Annual Renewal for Granicus LLC in the amount of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita, Kansas. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today. And I try to answer any questions and recommend your approval.
All right, questions for staff?
Got one. Josh, on the janitorial bids, you had an extension of one hundred and fifty days. What is going on with that?
The staff screen selection committee convened. They offer recommendation to make sure that we are fully in compliance with our policies and procedures. We're pulling it to rebid it and resolicit it out, and we'll make sure that we get it done.
Okay. I will, I will email you. I'll talk the vibe a little bit about it, but I have one person reach out about that, so I'll email you about that.
Please do. Thank you.
So were the bids too high? Is that why it's going back out?
No, they're going back out because we want to make sure that the processes of the evaluation was completed fairly and transparently.
Okay. All right, any further questions? All right, doesn't look like we have public here today, so with that, I will take the recommended action and receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. So I have a second.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Frye. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, next up, petitions for public improvements.
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Sean Matthews, Chief Design Engineer. Here to talk about petitions for public improvements. The legal requirements, the signatures on the petitions represent a hundred percent of the improvement district, so this is one developer who owns all the lands. All the land, the petitions are valid per Kansas State Statute twelve-six A O one. These are new petitions for public improvements. They include two phases of water, one phase of stormwater drain, one phase of sanitary sewer improvements, and two phases of paving improvements. And this is for Balman, a fourth addition, which is north of Thirty-First Street South and east of Maze Road. The developer will be bidding these privately, and then the city will take over, will acquire them after the projects are complete. Recommended action is approve the new petitions and budgets and adopt the new resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures. I don't stand for any questions yet.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back for discussion. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the new petitions and budget, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Do I have a second?
Second.
Our second by Councilmember Frye. All in favor, vote, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, now we're on, now we're on to council member appointments and comments. We'll start with appointments. Does anybody have any new appointments? Okay, seeing none, are there any comments for the good of the group? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank our staff for the snow removal on our roads and runways on Saturday. There's an amazing amount of snow in a, over an extended period of time, and I thought they did an amazing job keeping it as clear as possible. I know the airport had to shut down for a period of time, but it's also due to the record amount of snow that we got. So just again, thanks to our Public Works, the airport, our first responders. They made the best of a bad situation. Also, Saturday, our small business Saturday was affected because nobody could get out. And now there's a movement right now to do a do-over on this Saturday. So I highly encourage folks to get out and shop local, eat local, support local as much as they can on this Saturday. Let's have a do-over. And then finally, today is Giving Tuesday. So a lot of our nonprofits are struggling this time of year, and if anyone can find a little extra in their, in their wallet this year to help out our nonprofits, especially the smaller ones, that would be most appreciative. So thank you.
I appreciate those comments, especially among the city staff who's out there working. They don't get nearly enough credit. And also in regards to Giving Tuesday, it's been a little more difficult for charities over the last couple of years. So if you do have a little extra, it sure would help some of these charities around, so please take a look at it. Any further comments? All right, we're going to roll right into workshop today without ending the meeting. We have a couple of executive sessions to deal with afterwards, so instead of clocking out and then clocking back in the meeting, we're just going to go right through workshop here. So, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. During the past year, staff has been doing some review work in the city code, specifically in Title III, and it's got a number of amendments that it's bringing forward to you. Jan Jarman in the Law Department is going to start off the presentation and specifically be looking at items that we believe are obsolete in many cases and worthy of either deletion or amendment. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jan.
All right. Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. Jan Jarman with the Law Department. This has been an ongoing project where we were asked to, by Finance, to review some of the Title III licensing provisions. I noticed I have Steva Bossmeyer and Shayla Cotton here from Licensing to take a look at what we are proposing today. So, city license, as I said, city licensing requested Law Department to review Title III. There are a lot of changes we want to do, but we thought we'd pick basically the low-hanging fruit first and go for the easy ones that we don't use very often. The goal with this is to eliminate license requirements that are outdated and are no longer necessary. They're basically unused at this time. At this point, we've only reviewed Title III licenses. There are some in other titles we may visit later, but we're going to start with Title III. City Licensing compiled a list of licenses that are rarely used, and a list was provided, has been provided at this point to City Council. The Department of Law contacted any department that we thought would be impacted by the elimination of these licenses. I spoke with the Police Department, with the Wichita Airport and Fire, with M A P D and City Licensing to make sure we had input from everyone as to whether these licenses are necessary at this point. The standard we use to determine if we should keep a license is whether it currently serves to protect the public or otherwise promote a healthy community. And if we found the licenses weren't doing that, then, then we have them before you today because we're not sure there's a need for them. So, starting with the first license that we propose elimination of is three oh eight oh three oh cabaret license. Cabaret is no longer used at all because we, years ago, we created an entertainment establishment license, which meant that cabaret is, is no longer necessary. The second one we present to you is clairvoyance and fortune tellers. We suggest just eliminating this license. There was one of these licenses issued in two thousand and twenty-three. We appreciate that, but I'm not sure it promotes the, a healthy public to have this license. No one, there's no, been no clairvoyant busts by the Police Department. It's just something where somebody pays a fee and, and we have it. The third one we are thinking about, and would be interesting what you all think though, but it's directories. They create an ordinance that if you have, if you write a directory and put a directory out, that you should have a license to do that. But no one's ever gotten that license, ever.
Is that a phone book?
It would be like a phone, yes, yes.
So none of the phone books that we've had in the past have had licenses?
No. So no one has ever, it's never been enforced. We've never asked someone to get, we've never called them and said, we need a directory or need a license for this directory, and, and it's, it's been unused. Domino tables. Some time ago, they, they created a license where to have a public domino table, you need a license. And we do have two domino tables in Wichita that do have licenses. I'm not sure that that really promotes public safety or welfare, so we are recommending the elimination of that license. Itinerant photographers are people who don't have a photography business inside of a brick and mortar. They just meet out at the park and do photography outside. And no one, no, none of those licenses have been issued in two thousand and twenty-three, so we recommend eliminating it. Penny arcades, that's outdated. We actually have another ordinance that takes over, although we're recommending elimination of that as well. But penny arcades, none have been issued in two thousand and twenty-three or for some time. Three point one-two is theaters and shows, and we are, are recommending elimination of that. That's an interesting ordinance, really old. It looks like it probably happened around the time that we had blue laws, and there, long ago, movies weren't allowed on Sundays. And it looks like Wichita probably started to allow movies on Sundays, but they put some restrictions on the movies. Really, we're just concerned about the building and that it's a safe place to be, and fire would always be a part of that, whether you have this license or not. This license is not really necessary to keep the public safe in a building. So we would request, this, this ordinance really has to do about the content of the shows and not, not a safety issue. So we would suggest elimination of it. There were six of them issued in twenty-three. Probably the most controversial would be Coin Op, three point two-four, coin-operated amusement. That is an ordinance that says you have to have a license to deal in coin-operated machines. So if you have a pool table that takes coins and you take those to a bar and you place your machines in the bar, you have to have a license to put them in the bar. The bar also has to have a license to have them, and they have to have a sticker that costs about a dollar. And every Coin Op machine in an establishment has to have this sticker. We definitely recommend eliminating the sticker because what's happened is there's no review for it. You just go buy a roll of stickers and you put them on everything, and people are putting them on illegal machines, and they think that means that the city is deeming them legal. When, nobody looked at the machine, they're just a roll of stickers. While we're in that ordinance, we are also recommending to eliminate the, the license that a person has to have to deal in, in pool tables. It does garner, we have fifty licenses issued, and it does garner about eleven thousand, four hundred dollars to the city for those fees, but there's really no inspections that are done. There really hasn't been any kind of safety issue we've had with pool tables or dart machines or that kind of thing. So it's, it's a license that, that doesn't meet our definition of being required for health and safety reasons. So we're recommending elimination. If the council's not comfortable with that, we'd at least like to get rid of like the, the one-dollar stickers that are required on the machines because we don't want people to use those on illegal machines anymore and, and leave people with the idea that those are somehow now legal because of the sticker.
How much are the licenses? Do you know off the top of your head?
They are, one moment. They're quite a bit for the business. Steva, do you know what the licenses are, what, how much it costs?
Yeah, it's six hundred dollars for an operator, it's fifty dollars for an owner, and then one dollar for the decal.
Okay. So six hundred operator, fifty owner, one dollar for the decal.
Yeah, thank you.
Jan, could you back up to the slide that you were just on?
I think so.
Yeah, nope.
Oh, no.
Went forward.
Yep, thank you.
So on three point one-two, the theaters and shows, does that also include? I know that there was a, a show recently in the town east parking lot that had a big circus, a tent. Is that the same type of thing, since it's more temporary, or is this only for permanent-type facilities?
It is. One moment, I'll tell you.
Who issues that safety for the tent, the parking lot show?
We will not eliminate the tent requirement. So fire still has to review, and they do an actual inspection of the tent. And eliminating this license will not eliminate the need to get a license for your tent.
Right.
Just like fireworks tent.
Okay.
So, so that won't have any impact on that part of it. I do think it would have, one moment, let me look at the definition. Theatrical production, so I would call that a theatrical production, and I think you would, under, under the current ordinance, you should get a tent license and you should get a theater license.
Okay, but we'd be eliminating the theater license?
We would, but we would still have the safety issue of, of a good tent.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, did I go too far?
No, you're back.
Okay, very good. All right, three two eight is dance halls. That has been, there's been none issued in two thousand and twenty-three. They're not necessary anymore again because entertainment establishment is now used instead of dance halls. Three three two, business termination and liquidations. If you are going out of business and you put the big yellow signs up and you're going to have a business, a going out of business sale, we actually have an ordinance that says you have to have a license to have one. I would assume so you don't have one every week and pretend like you're constantly going out of business. But that's sort of a slippery slope. I mean, we don't manage prices in, in other types of businesses. And, and since none are issued, we just, not sure we see it as being necessary to protect the public, so we're recommending elimination. We're also recommending elimination of three point three-six auctions and auctioneers. There have been six issued. They're a low-cost license. They were probably created, it's, it's a fairly, it has quite a few provisions. It was probably created to decrease or to keep an eye on like theft and, and fencing items through an auctioneer, but that's not, we haven't had a big auction bust as long as I've been here, almost thirty years. That's not normally where you see things fenced, and I did contact the Police Department, and they don't think it's necessary to, to protect the, the public against theft and the resale of theft items. So we are recommending elimination. Three six four, advertising, vehicular advertising. That ordinance says that you have to have a license if you're going to have sound or video. You've seen those trucks drive around that have L E D advertisements. You have to have a license for that, or if you're going to have a sound, you have to have a license for that. And there were only three issued. We don't do any kinds of inspections. All you have to do is come in and pay the fee and you get your license, and that's really what we're trying to eliminate. We're getting, trying to get to a point, if you have a license, there's a reason because we're going to look at what you're doing. Now, they may be impacted if they have loud noise. They, we still have noise ordinances that we could use if they became a problem. If they were distracting to drivers, that's the only reason the council, you all, may want to keep it, is there might be some concern about distractions for drivers on these L E D-type advertising. But, but because we're not doing any real, you know, inspection of them, we are, we are advising further elimination.
Yeah, I, I think on our outdoor signage ordinances, we do have limitations on frequency of movement, how often they add changes. And then also the brilliance, how bright it is. And that could be a distraction, especially if you're in traffic. So I would be concerned about those two elements, if, how we could enforce that on these advertising vehicles.
This might be an ordinance that's better, instead of eliminating, if you're interested in that issue, that we could improve it. The way it's written now, it could use some honing in that direction. And as long as we're not dealing with message and we're just dealing with brilliance and, and movement. Yeah, and then I think it's something we might want to look at, so we can look into that. Three six six is advertising, signs, bills, posters. These are for the folks who leave like, you know, lawnmower service handbills on your front porch. You are technically, you're supposed to have a license for that, and actually, forty-eight people do have licenses to leave those handbills. If you're a politician, you don't have to have a license because we don't, we can't infringe on political speech. It is the core of, of what the Constitution protects. But we do say that you have to go by the littering. You can't litter. You have to leave your flyer under a mat or a tat, you ever notice that they are attached with rubber bands? That's because the ordinance says you have to leave those in a way that they won't blow away. So again, that's an ordinance that's a little, has probably too many provisions. If the council is interested in keeping that, we could refine it. I think we could also eliminate it because we do have littering ordinances that we could apply. If we had a company and they were flying all over the neighborhood, there's still things that we could do. There, we have other ways of, of keeping the litter from happening. You get a lot of folks who are upset with people getting up on their property and le, on their porch and, and leaving a handbill. But this doesn't say you can't. It just says that you have to have a license to do that. And there's no inspection, there's no, nobody does a background check. You just pay your fee and get your license, and which is why we're recommending elimination. Three eight eight is airport limousines. There is a limousine charter, a charter limousine ordinance, and it has some good safety provisions, and we are not recommending repeal of that. But the airport limousine, there have, there were none issued in two thousand and twenty-three. I spoke with the airport authority. They don't feel that it's necessary to have a specific airport ordinance, so we are requesting elimination. Three nine one, cultural market, not that old, I think that came around while I was here. But at this point, all of our cultural markets are city-owned, and they're covered under community event processes. So there's no need to have a separate license for the cultural market. So we're recommending just eliminating it at this point, that it's not necessary. Three nine eight is laundromats. To have an overnight laundromat, you're supposed to have a license. There were none issued in two thousand and twenty-three, so we are recommending elimination of that. Now, if certain things happen to the laundromat, if there's some music and dancing, then they might have to have an after-hours license now. But if it's just a regular laundromat with a couple people, we don't recommend you have to have a license for that.
They have Coin Op or the games.
That's right. Everything converges at the laundromat. And that is phase one of our recommended cleanup of Title III. Other thoughts? I hear you on the vehicular advertising. We're going to go back and do some work on that. Are there any others that you're concerned with?
Not in particular. Do we have a total estimated loss for the city as far as what we would expect to collect? I couldn't imagine it'd be more than twenty thousand or so.
It wouldn't be more than twenty. Steva, or Shayla, do you all agree with that? The biggest one is that Coin Op, which is eleven, but the rest of those licenses are very inexpensive.
Okay. Have there, are there any that W P D have any issues with? Has it all been cleared by them?
I have. I've cleared it through multiple depart, multiple divisions of W P D, including the chief, and, and there's no, no issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
I think my clairvoyance kind of failed me. I was waiting on the, my District Five colleague to say it looks like we're cutting the red tape and rolling out the red carpet.
I didn't have a, a current license to be that clairvoyant, so I couldn't.
Jan, how will we let the folks, you know, in rare exception circumstances, people did have licenses? Will we communicate with them and let them know that they're no longer need to do that so they don't come down to City Hall or, you know, take their time?
I would say honestly, probably they would, they would apply, and we would tell them it's no longer necessary. I think it would be great expense to us to send out notices. I mean, the small ones we could, the clairvoyance, but some of the larger.
And I was just thinking, like, the one that had three licenses, just communicate with those three entities, not every, you know, whatever.
I'm getting a nod from Licensing that that could, that could happen.
It doesn't have to, just a thought, I was just curious, so that way, you know, let them know, thanks for doing it, but you don't have to do it anymore.
Especially with emails, that'd be, I mean, hopefully, we have their emails. I'm getting another nod that we have emails so we could easily notify.
Okay, great, thank you.
The second portion of this, again, has come from some extensive staff review, and it has to do with community events and transient merchant licenses. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nate Johnson from the Law Department.
Thank you, Manager. And just chatting with Steva about that last question, we, Steva sends out renewal notices basically for every license. So instead of the renewal notice, she would just send a letter that's like, you don't need a notice this time. We went through the same thing with the second-hand dealer changes over the summer, so it'll be a similar sort of process to that. Sure thing. Some other changes to Title III will focus a little bit more on community events and transient merchants. And I've been working a lot with the community events coordinator, so this won't be nearly as broad as the first part of the presentation, but drill down on a couple of things for us here. We're looking at the community event permitting mostly just based on experience with it. There's some recommendations from the coordinator on changes that we could make, just to make things smoother. There's also been other changes in the code so we can line some stuff up well. With the transient merchant side, it's a little bit different, but connected to community events. We don't do a lot of transient merchant licensing anymore, but if you have more than two transient merchants, which is really just kind of any business booth, anything like that, at any event, you have to have a community event permit. There's been some other issues with transient merchant licensing, so we figured we'd kind of try to deal with all of that here and now. So starting with the community event pieces, the, the first, the first thing is kind of a cleanup with how the city functions now. There's reference in the community events ordinance to the Office of Environmental Health. We don't have one of those anymore, so we won't allow them to approve events. We can remove that from the ordinance. Another change is part of that, and I have written here consideration of whether, but this is more of a, a straight staff recommendation, to change the placement of the community events coordinator from Cultural Arts and Cultural Services to the Department of Park and Recreation. It's currently har, housed in Arts and Cultural Services, but it's kind of been an odd fit, honestly. Park does a lot more events. They apply for a lot of community events. Isaac, who's our community events coordinator, is on the same floor in the same area as Park and is technically an employee of Park. So we think it would make a lot more sense to have some synchronicity there and move that coordinator position to a designee of the Department of Park and Recreation.
So Nate, if you could go back to the first bullet point there, that, removing that reference, does that change anything procedurally as how staff reviews the application? I mean, obviously, it's there for some reason, even though we don't have a city department for that purpose.
Oh, and my apologies. I should have given more context for that piece. It's in the provision that's like when the coordinator has an event, they should talk to all of these different departments. So it's not an explicit approval or veto power or anything like that. It's just who does the community events coordinator talk to to make the best decision about approval or denial? So, you know, more just a cleanup to remove it from that piece.
But there would still be a consultation with someone at the city staff level regarding any environmental health concerns that could be from that application.
That's exactly right. It would just be with the departments we have. So Department of Public Works, Park Department, depending where it comes from.
I just want to make sure we weren't changing the process.
Not at all, no. And this is just because we don't have that anymore. Exactly right.
Got it.
Thank you. And then some other kind of cleanup pieces, but this is in the permitting exceptions piece for community events. We do have some exceptions for a community event permitting. One of those includes the baseball stadium, and we can do an exception for that, but it listed as Lawrence Dumont instead of Riverfront, so we want to update that to actually refer to the stadium as named now. One thing that we want to consider is whether Riverfront Stadium should be part of the list of facilities that are totally exempt from community event rules. So there are some there's some permitting exceptions that apply, but there's a big list, especially of city properties, things like Exploration Place at the bottom, where there's no permitting requirements at all. And consideration of whether we want to move Riverfront Stadium down into that piece. The third bullet point here is whether we want to add other parks, such as OJ Watson Park or other city properties to the list of exempted facilities. And we're still kind of looking into what that list should be and what the benefits and disadvantages might be of totally exempting a place. I know Riverfront Stadium does have some large events that we may want to continue to permit, so that might be a little bit different than OJ Watson Park. But wanted to bring this idea to maybe streamline the permitting and exception process for a few places around here.
Just so I understand, so currently, if you have an event at OJ Watson Park, you have to have a permit regardless? Is that what you're saying?
A community event, not every event triggers a community event permit. You have to 250 people. If the city's sponsoring it, we apply, but there aren't really requirements so much because we trust ourselves and have all these situations put in place. Most private events at OJ Watson Park, like birthday parties, things like that, that doesn't require a community event permit. It has to be an expected attendance at least of 250 people, and we kind of it's got to be that 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 sort of number. Another thing that we want to add to the exceptions is, and you heard a little bit about how we've got this entertainment establishment licensing regime, technically, entertainment establishments are subject to the community event application process, but like everything they do every night would probably be a community event since it's indoor with more than 250 people. We think that the entertainment establishment license covers that. That's how the city functions. That's how we enforce both of those licenses. We just want to make that clearer for our entertainment establishment licensees, basically.
So did as it relates to Riverfront Stadium, were there ever any events that city staff operated independently of the operator that's there now?
Not that I'm aware of, but I've only been here about a year and a half. So maybe.
Obviously, the operator has their own rules and allowances for the use of the facility, and they are in charge of the whole facility. So it would seem kind of unnecessary to have our own set of rules, and we don't do any events there.
Well, we have the ability to hold events there and use the facility for at least five, if I remember correctly. But you're right. The team controls the stadium would establish the rules for the use of the facility. So I don't personally believe that it's necessary to have the community event rules apply at the stadium, but that's.
But whereas with OJ Watson Park or any other properties, that still falls upon our staff
Correct.
to run those events and so forth.
Right.
Yeah, so not entirely analogous situations, but yeah, some different properties that we're considering, for sure. So moving to the authority of the community events coordinator, and this is a question we'd like definitely your guidance on. There's some waiver authority that the coordinator has now, so if someone submits an application a little late or their notifications of neighbors come in a little late, we can waive those time limits. There has been a request from the community events coordinator to consider the authority to waive application fees as well. It does not come up very often, but there are some situations where maybe the application fee is an impediment, and for something like good cause, we can set out some standards to waive that fee. Now, I did want to highlight, though, that there's a separate section. So there's O4O, which is the authority of the community events coordinator. O7O is the specific provision about fees, and it's currently set up where council approves fees that are set by the manager. So because of that, I just want to at least raise that explicit authority because of the way it relates some to the requests from the community events coordinator to at least have some means to waive fees, and we can come up with some standards so it's not every time and not totally discretionary. But there have been some situations where that would help the process.
What what are the fees currently?
And let me pull that up. I'm sorry. I've got the annual community event permit fee, but not the other one. And Steven, do you have the community event permit fee? I know that's not the one you look at, sorry.
I do not.
Okay.
I could be wrong. Not hitting them over the head with the.
Yeah.
I know we have to do one for children every year, but I think it's.
And it's not actually, I'll need to double check with Isaac on what it is for the amount for community event fees because it's it's not in the code and it's on our application page, which I'll I'll try to pull up as we kind of go through this presentation, too. My apologies for that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So and of course, this is the next one that's up, with the annual permit, where I do know the actual fee because we're asking to lower it. So, you know, perfect timing there. The annual permit for certain properties is currently set at $1,500, which has been very prohibitive for folks. There's a similar fees like for entertainment establishments or farmers' markets that are much lower. And we're thinking something more like $500 for those annual permits. We've had a few requests for things like that, kind of culinary institute stuff or some things on Wichita State and using some properties there. So this would help, I think, open up that possibility instead of it being $1,500 for an upfront fee when you don't know how many events you're going to have for the year. So just putting that more in line with what similar kind of events or programs would be. So we do have some questions, too, or some issues raised with the application of the community event permit itself. So we've had talk lately about security plans for things like drinking establishments, after-hours establishments. And currently, for community events, the code requires some security measures, but it's all laid out basically as a formula that the chief of police puts together for the number of off-duty officers that need to be at the event. There's not a plan requirement or any kind of diagram that we get or where entry or exit necessarily will be. We'll get kind of a diagram of what the event is, but not a security plan itself. So we're thinking a security plan could follow the model of similar recent amendments to drinking establishments where we get kind of some detail from the applicant about what the security will be like at the event, instead of just the number of off-duty officers that would be there. And again, we've got some pretty we've got good model language from recent actions by you all, if that's something that we would like to add to community event applications as well. And part of the review, this is kind of a cleanup thing. When the community event coordinator is reviewing the applications, there's a piece about making sure that all street closures have been approved by council. Now, that language is a little sloppy because not all street closures are approved by council. The ones we're concerned about are with temporary entertainment districts, so it's cleaning that up so there's no confusion. That's how we enforce it currently, but we just want to make clear there's no fuzziness on that review process piece. As part of street closures, there's a couple of things that we wanted to add to this. We might want we're thinking about maybe adding traffic engineering as a required approver of street closures. Currently, the community events coordinator interacts, communicates, consults with traffic engineering as necessary, things like automobile, larger events with lots of potential traffic issues. We could make that a requirement anytime there is a street closure as part of the community events and maybe just facilitate that process a little bit more. The other part of this is there's a requirement that when we've got alcohol licenses and a street closure, the community event coordinator is supposed to meet with the applicant and any alcohol licensee that's going to be at the event a week prior to the event. That apparently almost never happens, but it's kind of because the community event coordinator is already in constant communication with the applicant throughout the entire process. Our coordinator has asked that we make that a discretionary option to meet, not necessarily a requirement that might create some confusion again for applicants when they've been in constant communication with our with our regulated entities.
So Nate. Nate, on the first one.
Yep.
Is traffic engineering consulted on street closures now?
They are, but it's not required by code. The only requirement is to work with the chief of police. So we think just to make sure that always happens, it would be good to good to include.
So what what we're looking at here with the traffic engineering, would that mean that they would have to approve or are they just in a consultation type mode there?
The way it's set up now is it is consultation, but it's kind of a veto power kind of consultation. So chief of police might offer some recommendations and we'll make that a condition of application approval. Or we'll negotiate with the applicant to maybe find something that works for chief of police as well as the applicant. Same sort of thing with traffic engineering. They'd have to give the go-ahead, and we can incorporate conditions, but ultimate approval would still be with the community events coordinator.
Do you know if we've had any issues with traffic engineering over any events here recently?
No. I mean, there's been traffic issues, but there's not been an issue with consulting with traffic engineering. Isaac does a great job of keeping folks in the loop, but we we just think that because it happens every time and it is very valuable, it should be something we add to the code, if only to send the signal to applicants so they understand what they'll be going through, too. So this kind of that concludes the piece then on community event recommendations, street closures as part of community event permits as well. We've got a few related and somewhat tangential transient merchant recommendations, too. A big thing that we'd like to do is expand the exceptions for transient merchant licensing. We think that maybe too many sales that occur within the city would be subject to this licensing regime when we don't enforce it all that effectively anyway. A really big one is that there is an exemption when there's a sale event, something like that, sponsored by a nonprofit, educational institution, civic organization, something like that. And an example might be the Kids Business Fair over at Bradley Fair that's put on with like Wichita State and Innovation Center, things like that. But because it occurs on the Bradley Fair Street, there's question of whether it's close enough to the nonprofit or educational institution. And there's these weird 10-foot geographic limitations that the sales have to be super close physically to where the nonprofit's building is, basically. Now, I can imagine this came up because we had some situations where maybe we had too many sales all throughout the city of different merchants, something like that. That's not really an issue anymore. And these geographic physical conditions on events sponsored by nonprofits have just created a really difficult problem for just events that are focused, again, not on profit so much as just an event like the Kids Business Fair to develop entrepreneurial skills. Another situation we've had is nonprofit organizations might want to host like an art sale or event for folks who don't have homes, and we don't they would have to host it maybe on their property, but they don't have a space big enough for that or just right outside. So we're just making it when there's a primary sponsor of an educational institution, nonprofit, then those folks making sales at the event do not need a transient merchant license and the money can go right back to them. We added the word primarily in there as well, so the exception doesn't swallow the rule. You can't just tack on a nonprofit to just a big massive kind of sale event or something like that. The big the purpose is just if there's kind of a nonprofit situation to not have to be a transient merchant. Another exception, too, is sales for by minors who are not transacting business as like an employee or agent of another entity. So again, Kids Business Fair is another example. Technically, kids selling lemonade currently probably need a transient merchant license. So we're just trying to avoid that that situation. And this is kind of the thing I highlighted at the top. So issuance of a license. Currently, if you've got two transient merchants, two people selling stuff at your event, you need a community event permit. This has been a really difficult issue for a lot of just smaller events, a lot of smaller merchants trying to like group together for something over the weekend, and then they've got community event permit costs. We would like to raise the number to four. That's been recommended by the coordinator. He also thinks that we could probably just eliminate that section, and instead of transient merchants being a trigger for community events, if your event otherwise hits the qualifications for a community event, you know, outdoors, 250 people, then then you would get a permit, not not triggered by the transient merchants that might be on the property. So that's the last piece, kind of connecting community events and transient merchant. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Questions for Nate?
Yeah, I had a few. So going back to slide 12, I agree with moving that person under Parks and Rec. As someone who's done some community events, it was always a lot of extra work to go talk to cultural arts and Parks and Rec. I'm glad Isaac's at Park and Rec now, but before going over to Century Two and then coming into the city. So I think that's a good move for sure. Then on slide 13, as you were doing research, I can't remember if it was a city ordinance or not, but there were some some of our parks that you could not have alcohol in per policy or ordinance. I saw that like in 2018, I think, because Mac Adams was one of those parks where you couldn't have alcohol, but some of the events we wanted to do had a beer garden.
Okay.
Did you look at any other parks and is there consideration of opening that up now that we have this really nice brewery scene? Like, they may want to do events, but if there's actual ordinance restrictions not allowing alcohol, that could be a burden.
For sure. And that it's kind of a separate question. So the ordinance where it there's exceptions for certain public properties to allow alcohol, where it lists the parks where you can do that, is in Title IV, so kind of part of the alcohol licensing. But we can definitely look at that, too, to try to sync up the exceptions under alcohol licensing to make sure it matches the exceptions that we have with community event permitting. Does that kind of get what you're talking about? Okay, cool.
It does. Then on the security plans, I agree with having those. That formula has been interesting. Some of the events that we have, like last year, Juneteenth, probably had the biggest year we've had. So I don't know what that would require as far as law enforcement, but I I think a security plan is good, given what we've been seeing around the country and some people having ill wishes for some of these good events. But I don't know if that formula sometimes may have higher than what's necessary. And I'm not in law enforcement, so I can't say, but sometimes I think you may end up with more law enforcement officers than necessary. But if there's a security firm, I think somewhere in there, there should be some validation that they know what they're doing and it's not just a bunch of friends hanging out. Because because if something happens and they don't have the training or response plan necessary, then that could be a bad situation. So some form of security plan should be there. I don't know about the necess the formula necessarily, but I do trust that the officers kind of know what they can handle and what they can't. So I don't know if that's the formula, but what my experience has shown is they kind of say, this is what we need there and kind of go from there. But I think it's worth maybe some conversation on that.
And what we're thinking, too, we weren't even sure yet and appreciate that direction of whether to have security plan maybe in lieu of the formula or in addition to the formula so they kind of work together. So we'll give that some consideration as well.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could echo my colleague's comments, in my former life, with a different administration, different council and a different police chief, I had an event application that I was told I needed to have 30 police officers for the security. They ended up only securing eight for me and approved my plan. So the formula was not
Yeah.
a real reality.
Yeah.
And I would have much better had a security plan than just an arbitrary number. So I think that's good advice.
Yeah, my only other thing was slide 18 on the allowing the community event coordinator to have some discretion there, just to ensure that there's some well-documented reasons as to why a conversation might be happening so we don't have folks feeling like they're being picked on.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly right. And I may be frank, the issue we've kind of had is sometimes it's hard to maybe get everybody for the meeting the week prior, and we don't want people basically freaking out that maybe the event might not happen. So I think that's exactly right, making sure we have clear stand objective standards for when to waive that meeting. And maybe it's we've met with all of them this number of times within the month before the event or something like that, too. So, yeah, for sure.
Thank you for all your work in this, and thank you to Jan. Really appreciate it. I did have a question from someone, which is great, someone's watching and someone's interested. So we're on slide 18. So thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for setting me up. Whether to consider So on slide 18, so thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for setting me up, whether to consider to add the traffic engineer for street closure along with the chief of police. So what if the police, the chief, has been working with the community on this event? Could the traffic engineer veto it and be the one to say no?
In a sense, so, kind of. I don't think ultimately that's how it would be, we can kind of frame it either way we want. How we think of it more is, chief of police or traffic engineering will say yes or no with conditions. Community event coordinator can do their best to get the applicant to accept all of those conditions, but then it is the decision of the community event coordinator ultimately whether to accept that from the traffic engineer, more or less.
So it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's not full veto, but it is, we need to really take that consideration into account.
Okay, thank you so much.
Would there be an appeal process that they could go through, similar to what we have now, or?
Yeah, this, so the appeal process would be the same, no changes to that, yeah.
Any further questions? Councilmember Frye?
Yeah, one more. Slide 14, where we talk about the authority to waive application fees, and then, a concern of a slippery slope there. I want to make sure that we really have those standards and what would determine the just cause for that. I hate picking winners and losers, especially at a staff level. I think that could be dangerous, and I think we'd have to be very cautious about that and who's getting, in all the interest of fairness and transparency.
Of course, for sure.
Right, so I think we'd have to really tighten that down.
Sounds good.
I think my last comment is, Isaac has been doing a really good job with community events and streamlining things, and I've talked to him about streamlining as well, so I appreciate this conversation of doing that. It's always easier to talk to one person. Hopefully, that doesn't give Isaac too much more work, but...
Yeah, I hope he appreciates it all, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one more, Nate.
Oh, my apologies, sorry about that.
No problem. Got to let everybody else go first now.
My bad.
There have been some in the community who have been talking about houseless individuals or homeless individuals perhaps selling some art, or having an art show or something. How would the transient merchant recommendations figure into that?
Yeah, and that's why we really wanted to, one of the reasons we wanted to really broaden, and this is the first bullet point here, and I didn't tie that together well enough properly for this slide, but by eliminating all of these weird conditions for when a nonprofit, civic institution, educational institution host events where folks can sell stuff, by broadening that exception, we hope to allow space for that, basically. So the nonprofits, as long as they're a sponsor of an event, an art sale for unhouse folks, all of the money on the way we have it set up could go directly to the artists, for example, under that. And they could basically have it anywhere, as long as the primary sponsor is a nonprofit organization rather than a for-profit institution, basically. We didn't want to necessarily make it, we had some trouble finding ways to narrow down all the way to individuals, kind of based on their status or housing status or something like that, and are hoping that giving more room for nonprofits, say art shows, sales, things like that, might meet the same goals effectively.
All right, appreciate it. All right, now we are moving into the executive session portion of our meeting. I have three motions to make, because we have three separate executive sessions. Jennifer, on the part where we talk about the duration of the session?
Yes.
Should I just make it 10:30 to 11:15 on every motion?
Let's break it down, motion by motion, thanks.
Fifteen minutes at a time, I got you. All right, so motion one, I move that the city council recesses to executive session for 15 minutes to review an offer of settlement pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, dealing with pending litigation, legal and legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The executive session will begin at 10:30 a.m. and end at 10:45 a.m., after which, to concurring executive sessions, the meeting will resume in council chambers, I suppose. Will this be the chambers here?
Will stay here.
Boardroom.
Okay, the boardroom, okay. So do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Frye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all opposed? The ayes have it. Motion two, I move that the city council recesses into executive session for 15 minutes to receive information from property management staff pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for the preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property. The executive session is required to protect the city's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest. The executive session will begin at 10:45 a.m. and end at 11 a.m. The meeting will resume in the council boardroom. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Frye, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes do have it, thank you. Third motion, I move that the city council recesses into executive session for 15 minutes to receive information on multi-district litigation pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and potential litigation. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The executive session will begin at 11 a.m. and end at 11:15 a.m. The meeting will resume in the council boardroom. So with that, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Frye, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. And with that, we will recess into executive session, so y'all don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.